Lead our school district forward. And so with this forum, that's what makes this forum so important. So if you did not know it, just another fun fact, our school district is about 433 square miles. It's actually one of the largest school districts in the state of Texas when it comes to the footprint. So before we begin, just some quick notes. The questions tonight, we want you to submit questions. We will, we have planned eight to 10 questions that came from our committee. But if you submit a question, I want you to remember a few things. First, questions that are directed at a specific candidate and cannot be asked of both candidates will not be asked. Rude or inflammatory questions will be excluded. Questions of a similar topic will be combined so that we don't have repetitiveness. And then lastly, please print clearly. This is a school board forum. We would like to be able to read your questions. You think I'm joking? I'll show you copies if you'd like to see them. So to the candidates, please speak clearly into your microphones so that the people here in attendance tonight, as well as the people watching online on Facebook can hear you. Our goal is to finish no later than 6:30 PM. And additionally, that this candid forum will obviously live on our Facebook page, but will also be uploaded to our Bastropvotes.com website in the next couple of days. To the audience, please, please silence your cell phones. It's very distracting when a phone goes off for these candidates when they're trying to think and answer questions off the cuff. So please silence your cell phones. And then if you need to leave during the forum, we ask that you don't re-enter. Just our respect for the candidates. So now, on to our timekeeper. We have Jackie Gabbercheck. Yes, big round of applause. She is our membership engagement director at the chamber. So thank you for volunteering your time tonight. She was voluntold, actually, but okay. And then to our moderator. So we have the Honorable Judge Chris Dugan of the 423rd District Court. Judge Dugan brings a wealth of experience to the table, having received his Bachelor's of Administration from the University of Texas. He earned a law degree from Texas Tech. Go Raiders! After graduation with his law degree, Judge Dugan started his career in the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals in Eastland, Texas. I'm a West Texas girl, so I know exactly where that is. And then he served as a prosecutor in Travis County for nearly two decades. He was elected to the 423rd District Court in 2008 and is moderating our candid forum tonight. Judge Dugan has also been a big supporter of the chamber and investor since 2002. Please join me in welcoming the Honorable Judge Dugan to the stage.
All righty, good evening, everybody, ladies and gentlemen. First off, I obviously cannot publicly endorse any candidate. I checked with the Commission on Judicial Conduct and they said, as long as you're not endorsing anybody, you could be the moderator. So I'm not publicly endorsing any candidate. Now that I got that disclaimer out of the way, let's give a round of applause for Becky in the chamber for doing these initiatives. I also, I guess, one other disclaimer, I did not come up with the questions. So I told Judge Eskew, if he wants to throw something at the stage, don't throw it at me. I didn't come up with the questions. But I do want to thank Ms. Becky and the chamber for doing this because any kind of initiative to get people more involved, more active, get them involved in local elections, it means a lot. So I think they deserve a lot of credit. How this is going to happen, each candidate will be given a two-minute opening statement and then a minute and a half response to each question, and a minute rebuttal for the candidate who is asked the question first. No rebuttal be permitted if there's three or more candidates. I paid attention in school, there's only two candidates. And then each candidate will be given a two-minute closing statement. It'll, y'all will get the hang of it when we did this the last time. For the council candidates, it seemed to work pretty good. So with that, we will start out with the opening statements, and it is done by alphabetically. So Mr. Dillon, you get to give your first opening statement, and the timekeeper has a little time card down here. One more thing from Ms. Becky.
Can we let the unopposed candidates please do their two-minute opening statement?
That's okay with me.
Yep.
This is not my courtroom. You do the rules here, Ms. Becky. So we'll have the unopposed candidates give a two-minute opening statement. Why'd y'all sit way back there?
Thank you. Well, like they said, you can't vote against me, so no matter what I say, you have to... No, I'm just kidding. No, thank you to the chamber and Becky for setting this up. I just was talking to a gentleman outside and he said, I just want to know who the candidates are. So this is huge, and I appreciate that. So real quick, I know I only got two minutes. Twelve years ago, I ran and won the position at that time for the school board because there was lack of unity on the school board at that time, 15, 20 years ago. People didn't agree. There was, and the big issue for that was there was lack of direction among the teachers that we spoke with, the staff. The schools were almost independent to some degree. And so there were a lot of changes that were being made, and some of those were trying to become a team. Since then, we are now double the population in 12 years. We've been able to drop the tax rate because of that and other reasons, but I think we've been very fiscally responsible. Hired superintendents, implemented school, police, safety, security across the district. We were able to build up the fund balance to a proper amount for emergency measures, of which we've had to dip into a little bit time here and there, and then pass balanced budgets every year, including this last year, which wasn't easy. And the key is, is that I can't take praise for that, nor can any of the board members that were on that school board that were doing those things, because we work as a team. And so that was the main thing I wanted to talk about is, is that the key is team. We don't always agree with each other, but we do have to have an agreement on what direction we want to go and where we want to take the district. And so I've been happy to be part of a team of eight that's been able to get us where we are today. Thank you.
All right, good evening, and thank each and every one of you for being here and caring about our kids, our staff, and the parents. That's what we're here about. And thank the candidates for running and caring. There was a day we begged people to run for the school board. Took a lot of begging for Dr. Mix, by the way, and he's been a great board member. I'm Ashley Mutchink, and I'm your proud president of the school board. It's a great honor. This is my fifth term, very passionate, very excited about it, obviously unopposed. And so I just wanted to share with you a little bit about, take this time to possibly pass on some things to you that you may not know. What is the role of a school board member? And basically, it's to set policies, adopt a budget, and to provide oversight, and to hire and fire the superintendent, and also evaluate the superintendent once a year. And we evaluate that superintendent on priorities that we set in team building. Now, Dr. Mix shared some of those priorities, and the number one priority is safety, security, and discipline. That's been one for years. And to make that word very clear, discipline. Okay, my kids have been through the system when a lot of changes needed to be made, probably at the worst point of discipline ever in the history of BISD. And we've made a lot of strides, and we're continuing to stride and continuing to monitor that. As well as academic achievement. Switched the curriculum two years ago, it wasn't popular. Nobody likes change, nobody likes an upgrade on their iPhone. And so it's a lot of fun, but we have to do something to move the bar. Okay? And so it's been really tough on the staff and the state in regards to how our kids test. Last year was the first time they had to do it all online. That's very difficult, and that's a big adjustment. We have not had a state rating at Bastrop ISD in five years. And so there is some misinformation out there on the internet about a rating and what it looks like. And we'll see if we get one this year. And of course, facilities and operations. You've seen that we passed $500 million worth of bonds. Thank you very much. We failed bonds for 14 years in a row. We're glad to get some behind. We're a little over 13,000 students. And the last one is relationships. And with that, I want to say thank you, relationships with the chamber, thanks for what you do and y'all do and your staff in supporting BISD. So thanks for the opportunity.
All right, now turning to our candidates. We will start with an opening statement by Chris Dillon.
Good evening. I want to begin by thanking the Chamber of Commerce and President Womble for hosting this forum and for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Chris Dillon, and for the past seven years, I've had the honor and privilege of serving as a trustee on the Bastrop ISD school board. My commitment to our school stems from a deep connection to this community and a longstanding dedication to support education, whether through the Bastrop Education Foundation, its flagship fundraiser, the Sportsman's Manquity, or the many other community initiatives my family and I have been proud to support. Serving on the school board is something I truly cherish. It's a responsibility I take very seriously because at its heart, it's about our most valuable resource, our children. I believe every student deserves a safe and secure learning environment and an education that prepares them for whatever path they choose in life. A little about me, I'm a proud graduate of Bastrop High School, class of 1990, and the only current board member who's a product of Bastrop ISD. I went on to earn a degree in accounting from Baylor University, an MBA from Texas State University, and a law degree from St. Mary's University. And for the past 25 years, I've operated my law practice right here in Bastrop as a small business owner. I've been married to my wonderful wife Christina for 24 years this year, and together we're raising two sons. Connor, who was a 2023 graduate of Bastrop High School and just made the dean's list at Baylor University, and Logan, who's a sophomore at VHS. Like all parents, we want the very best for our children, and that same belief drives my work here on the school board. And as Becky said, Bastrop's one of the largest districts geographically in the state, covering 400, almost 450 square miles. We're also the largest employer in the region with around 1,800 dedicated employees, most of whom are classroom teachers, working hard every day to educate and inspire our students. As a trustee, I look forward to continuing to serve with the guiding principle of every child, every day. That means ensuring that every student in Bastrop ISD has the opportunity and support they need to pursue their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. And we'll now have an opening statement from John Eason.
All right, thank you, Judge. Well, my name is John Eason, and I am running for place five, and I do appreciate the chamber for hosting this event tonight. And I want to first just clear up a couple of things that are kind of set out there that, one of the reasons that we're running here is because somehow we got upset regarding the chaplaincy back a few months ago when the school board was asked about maybe having chaplains in the school. And I just want to first just clear that up. I've never even had that conversation since that night. The things that keep me awake at night are not that. The things that keep me awake are not. It's really just the illiteracy that we're facing in our school districts. And even though we had two opening statements, I can't rebut the two incumbents, but we, I would like to believe that these things actually were being corrected and are being corrected, but I just have a very fundamental template here, that the classroom is the hub of learning. It's the template. That's where everything begins and ends. And the two most important really people in the classroom is the student and the teacher. And so when we're talking about restoring the classroom, we're saying bringing order back to the classroom. Restoring discipline, I appreciate what President Ashley mentioned, but we're not, we need a lot of areas here where we can bring discipline back into the classroom and bring order back in the classroom, bring engagement back in the classroom, accountability in the classroom, and hopefully lifting the morale of the classroom. I think every decision, literally every decision on the board, has to be referenced to the classroom. It doesn't matter if we grow to 20,000 students. If we can't teach 13,000 students to read, we're going to be in a lot of trouble when the district reaches 20,000 students. All of these gentlemen have been on the board for a lot of years. They've all had their chances, and thank you. I didn't even see the 30 or 15 second one.
I appreciate both the candidates looking down at the timekeeper. It makes my job as a moderator a whole lot easier. I do appreciate it. All right, because Mr. Dillon gave the first opening statement, the first question will go to John Eason, and it will be, please tell us what is the most important priority from the 2025-2026 Bastrop ISD legislative priorities? So the most important priority for the legislative priorities? Like, I didn't make up, these are not my questions.
Okay. Well, I can't, I mean, unless we're talking about, you know, HB3, I'm not for sure if that's what we're actually talking about here, and school funding as for the state of Texas. But I can say that I know that our district priorities need to be discipline, accountability, engagement, and raising the morale of our classrooms. Because of the staffing problem, because of the classroom and the condition of the classroom, so many teachers are not finding it fulfilling, or at least very difficult to carry out their educational responsibilities. As I mentioned before, everything has to be gauged against it, our funding, the decisions that we make as a board, because again, ultimately, it really is educating our kids, and educating our kids begins in the classroom. And if they cannot be educated because of the chaos, the disorder, then it doesn't really matter if we build new facilities or create greater spaces, if we fail fundamentally to educate our kids how to read. I think the thing that is at least my priority is to become an ambassador of literacy. And let's raise those scores.
One of the biggest challenges Bastrop ISD is facing right now is the financial pressure caused by legislative inaction and rising inflation. Since 2019, we've all experienced this, but inflation has increased by over 25%, but the basic student allotment for schools, the amount the state provides per student, hasn't been adjusted at all. That puts a real strain on our ability to meet student needs, support staff, and continue growing responsibly. Texas was founded on the principle of free public education, and it's in our state constitution, but that promise only works if the state does its part. In the meantime, I'm committed to doing everything we can locally to optimize our resources and prioritize what matters most, classroom instruction and student success. And that means making smart, data-informed decisions, continuing to invest in programs that boost student engagement and attendance, because attendance directly affects our funding too, and supporting the staff who all make it happen. When students are present and engaged, achievement improves, and so does our financial outlook. And if the legislative priority has to be making the legislature realize that they need to appreciate that 25% that we've all experienced, so that we can give those pay raises to our teachers that they so earnestly deserve. But even with these constraints, Bastrop ISD has remained fiscally responsible and academically strong, but we must continue advocating at the state level while doing our part to protect the heart of public education, which is our students, our teachers, and the learning that happens every single day.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Mr. Eason, you're permitted a 60-minute rebuttal.
60 minutes, thank you very much. I'll try to have it within 60 minutes. Yes.
Judge, you know he's a pastor, right?
Yes, I absolutely.
Anybody else want to be a moderator out here?
Okay, give me 15 seconds now. I absolutely agree that Texas should step up. That's a given. You know, school funding had an increase since, I think, 2019. Texas, to me, which number you want to read is either 44 or number 42nd in the United States on school funding, okay? Number one being the best number. I mean, if we're going to boast to have the eighth-largest economy in the world or the ninth-largest economy, at least we should be able to say we fund our schools more than all other states in America. That unfortunately is not going to be answered with the school board. These are unchangeables, these are beyond our pay grade. My thing is, these constraints are really are just challenges. I mean, there's always going to be challenges. I don't ever foresee a future where we're going to have so much money we don't know what to do with. But the excuses actually have to stop, and I would like to just hear one person, either on the board or in the school district, take responsibility and quit using the challenges that we face as excuses. Excuses can be excuses, or they can become challenges. These are things we cannot change like that. Thank you.
All right, question number two will first go to Mr. Dillon. Bastrop ISD expects TEA to release the 2023 results within the next couple of weeks. Although BISD has reported their numerical STAR score data to the board and to the public through board presentations, they haven't reported letter grades for 2023 or 2024 due to lawsuits. How do you think the letter grades will impact the school district?
Well, let's talk about that for a second. State law requires schools to report performance by race, associating economic status, and usually through standardized tests like STAR. But those tests only capture a narrow slice of what students actually learn. They can provide some useful feedback, but they also come with big flaws. For example, they often test reading ability in a way that distorts how we measure other subjects. For example, when you're testing second grade math using fourth grade reading, you're not getting a result for second grade math, you're getting a result for fourth grade reading. Plus, the shift to online testing and the use of AI in grading has caused serious issues with fairness and accuracy. Even so, our district has not made excuses. We've doubled down on student-focused solutions, drilling into individual performances, strengthening our curriculum, and investing in our teachers. Our educators are the heartbeat of this district. They're working hard every day to meet students where they are and help them grow. When we received our 2023 STAR schools scores, we took a hard look at the data and made some bold, necessary decisions to better support our students and teachers. That included leadership changes at several campuses, adopting new, high-quality instruction materials in reading and math, and providing year-long professional development. When 2024 scores came in, we stayed committed to that momentum, and we made another key leadership change in our curriculum and instruction department, expanded the use of high-quality materials to include science, and brought the new teacher project to every remaining campus. We're not just reacting to data, we're using it to drive meaningful change. It's all part of our commitment to make sure every child, every day, gets the education they deserve.
Mr. Eason?
Could you repeat the question one more time, Judge?
Bastrop ISD expects TEA to release the 2023 results within the next couple of weeks. Although BISD has reported their numerical STAR score data to the board and to the public through board presentations, they haven't reported letter grades for 2023 or 2024 due to lawsuits. Excuse me, how do you think the letter grades will impact the school district?
I can't honestly say that that's going to impact the school districts any more than the STAR results and the federal report card that already exist. These numbers do exist. I will say they're difficult to find, even on the BISD website, but the numbers are there, they've been there for several years. I feel like that one of the things that I've heard, you know, coming from the board about the testing, I mean, I absolutely agree that the test does not capture the full learning capacity of a student, okay? It doesn't. And we know students that do very well but have bad test days. But really, the fact of the matter is, we function in a world that take test. Almost every board member would have had to take a test, either being a lawyer, an insurance person, a chiropractor. We live in a world of testing. At least, we need to teach kids how to take tests then, because once they get out of the school district, they're going to confront a world that you will only be able to advance in testing. And there's no excuses then, that just says, hey, we have bad days. I'm sure when Mr. Dillon took the bar exam, he couldn't say, hey, you know, testing is difficult for me, or whoever takes these tests. So I feel like that, yes, the test doesn't say the whole thing, but then that needs to be one of our, that we become very intentional in helping kids learn how to take tests.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon, in all fairness, you now get a 60-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay.
While we recognize the importance of accountability in education, it's essential to understand that TEA accountability ratings do not fully capture the dedication, growth, and day-to-day efforts of our teachers and students. These ratings are based on a limited set of metrics and cannot reflect the relationships built in classrooms, the resilience shown in overcoming challenges, or the individual progress made by students. Regardless of any rating, we are proud of the hard work, passion, and commitment demonstrated throughout our schools every single day. And I've always believed we need better ways to measure student learning, more comprehensive tools that reflect the full picture and not just a single test score. Our teachers and students deserve to be supported and not penalized by the system. And I'll keep advocating for those tools that truly reflect the incredible work happening in our classrooms.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Question number three goes to Mr. Eason first. What post-secondary readiness measures are you in favor of, especially as it relates to career and technology educational programming?
Well, I mean, readiness has been another weakness in the district. 52% of our graduates are basically graduating not ready, whether it's career, whether it's military, college, and, you know, that's one of the metrics that has confused me. We have a high graduation rate, 95 maybe-plus percent, but yet we have a very low readiness rate. And so I'm having a hard time reconciling those two numbers. What's the standard to even prepare students to go to graduate and to go into these areas, whether it is college, whether it's in a tech, a tech trade? But I believe that if somehow, if we do not prepare them through reading and mathematics and just what we just called the basic fundamentals of learning, then I feel like if they're graduating unready, then they got to go to the, you know, they got to take remedial courses for college, you know, they go lower, low on military entrance exams and are unable to get good jobs. I just feel like we have to buckle down and just get back to educating our kids. And I think that's going to take the work of everybody, and I appreciate those that are actually working very, you know, diligently to bring that about.
Mr. Dillon?
When we talk about the purpose of a school district, it all comes down to one clear goal, ensuring students graduate ready for their next chapter in life. A high school diploma is more than a piece of paper. It's a symbol of perseverance, hard work, and preparation for the future. That's why Bastrop ISD's 99% graduation rate is so powerful. It proves that this district isn't just meeting expectations, it's exceeding them. Graduating 99% of students means Bastrop ISD is doing what every school district should strive to, providing the support, resources, and opportunities students need to cross that stage and earn their diploma. It's a testament to the dedicated educators, strong leadership, and community that believes in its students. But what really sets us apart is our investment in career and technical education. We offer 15 different programs of study across both of our high schools, ranging from animal science to cybersecurity, automotive technology to teaching and training. These programs offer real-world experience, hands-on learning, and industry-based certifications that give students a head start on high-wage, high-demand careers. Students can even earn an associate's degree before they receive their high school diploma through the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. One of the things I'm especially proud of is a significant increase in our college, career, and military readiness, and that's grown from 45% to 75% just this last year. Now, that's a huge gain, and it reflects the hard work of our students, teachers, counselors, and administrators to make sure our graduates are truly prepared. But that success didn't happen overnight. It came from intentional efforts. Even more exciting, we expect that number to be even higher this next year. Simply put, we're not a one-size-fits-all district. We give each and every student what they need to succeed, no matter their chosen path.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Mr. Eason, rebuttal?
You know, all due respect, I'm not for sure where that 75% came from. I mean, I read right off the BISD latest, you know, web reports. 99% graduation and only 48% readiness. I think if you talk to just most teachers in our district, we have basically removed all standards to graduate a kid. It almost just becomes just show up, and if you can show up and finish your 12 years, you will be getting a diploma. There really is no standards anymore. The policies are in place, absolutely, that's why we can just repeat the policies, repeat the script on this stuff. But the reality is this, our kids, more than 50%, are graduating not ready to move forward. The 99%, then we have to be accountable why we are graduating over 50%. The 99%, then we have to be accountable why we are graduating, over 50% of our kids, as though they are ready. They will enter into a very alternate universe when they graduate. Because the world that we have to work in works by a different metric than what the BISD is working on.
Question number four first goes to Mr. Dillon with regard to security. What do you know about how Bastrop ISD is handling safety and security at our campuses?
Well, we've made the decision as a board, as a school district, to implement the Bastrop ISD Police Department, number one, where we have an officer on every single campus. Now, the state gives us $15,000 a year for each of those officers. But guess what? Their salaries and the vehicles and everything else cost a lot. So we've had to make some sacrifices in some other areas to make sure we have security on our campuses. We've installed protective film in all the windows that have shown, when you see the casualties that happen, the protective film, it creates that delay that's needed so that if an intruder's coming in, it delays them so that the police can respond in time. We have our doors locked on our campuses. If you're going in, you have one central place you have to go in, and every other door on that campus is locked, so that our kids are safe and they can stay and be taught and learn in that safe environment that we expect them to have.
Mr. Eason, same question. What do you know about how Bastrop ISD is handling safety and security at our campuses?
Well, I mean, Mr. Dillon's going to definitely be more informed on that because I'm not, hadn't really given a lot of time of research. I am glad that we have secure campuses. That's not vision from the school board, that's mandated from Texas. So I can't, we can't take a whole lot of credit for it locally, which is something we're supposed to and have to do, and it's a smart thing to do. But I will say this: yes, I'm glad we're protecting ourselves against intruders. But you know, something else that's on our rise that is actually not safe is the bullying on our campuses. I could line parents up from here, almost 95 of kids who have either been minimally assaulted or being bullied, regularly bullied, and the district turning a blind eye to it, being passive towards it. This is not something that's done in secret, this is not done, some, an exception. And so I feel like safety has to be with, inside those locked doors and inside the classrooms. And when there is violent behavior and when kids are bullied by other kids and groups of kids, that's the kind of safety I'm looking for. I mean, God forbid we ever have an intruder from the outside, but right now, what's happening inside those locked doors are affecting a lot more students than what's happening on the outside of our doors. And we need to become very intentional to make it safe, not only for our students, but also our teachers, because our teachers have also faced injury as well in BISD.
Mr. Dillon, you may issue a rebuttal.
Sure. I know Mr. Eason doesn't have a reason to know this because he's not getting all the information, but bullying is defined by statute, and every instance of bullying in Bastrop ISD is investigated fully, a report is written, and consequences are meddled out. Now, he can anecdotally say he thinks kids are being bullied, but that's not the case. Every incident of bullying is being investigated in Bastrop ISD. And I will stake my reputation on that, on the police officers that investigate, on our teachers that investigate it, and everything else that happens on our campuses.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Eason, you get question number five first. Policy question. What is your stance on the participation of male athletes in girls' sports?
Absolutely not. I believe people can only participate in sports with the gender they were born with. I am 150% against anything that would agree with putting men in women's sports and honestly, vice versa. It's dangerous both ways. We're going to save time on that one because there's nothing to expound.
Mr. Dillon?
I agree, we're going to save time on that one. There's nothing to expound on it. I agree with Mr. Eason.
You're entitled to a rebuttal, but...
Okay. We're good.
All right. Mr. Dillon, you get question six first. How would you prioritize the district's budget and ensure that funding is being allocated efficiently to meet the needs of students, staff, and the community?
Wow. I think we do that already. And, you know, even with, last year, we've had an $8 million budget deficit when it came down to it. But managing rapid growth while protecting the quality of education and being mindful of taxpayers is one of the biggest responsibilities we face, and it's something I take seriously. Over the past several years, I've helped guide Bastrop ISD through a nearly 50% increase in student enrollment. During that time, I've worked alongside my fellow board members and district leadership to plan ahead and communicate with our community and invest wisely. Under my leadership, voters have approved over $500 million in bonds to build schools and infrastructure we need to keep pace with the growth. And we did it without raising the infrastructure tax rate. In fact, the overall tax rate has gone down. That's the kind of responsible planning is how we protect both our classrooms and our community. And as we continue to look forward to 2030, I'll continue to prioritize those forward-thinking solutions: building capacity where it's needed, maintaining low student-to-teacher ratios, and ensuring that every dollar spent directly supports student learning. It's about balance, investing in the future, and without placing an unfair burden on taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Eason. Same question. How would you prioritize the district's budget to ensure that funding is being allocated efficiently to meet the needs of students, staff, and the community?
As I mentioned really in the opening statement, that we have to have a starting point, a reference point. It can't be with the budget. You don't ask the money where you go, you tell the money where to go. That's what vision does. Vision doesn't, money, vision doesn't follow budget. We don't look at the bank and say, okay, we got this kind of money, let's spend it here. You say, here, this is what we want to do. And that's what provision is, to advance the vision. So vision first has to be set, not looking at the budget, not looking at anything, no other metric. It is fundamentally the classroom. And how can you make the classroom better? Well, one thing is happy teachers, happy classrooms. So any extra or any money, there's no extra money, I appreciate the challenges that we face, but everything has to be measured by that metric, by that reference point. And so if, like, here's a good example, though. Let's just get something, when, in one of the last layoffs that the district did, they laid off categorically the teachers that had what we call what, direct student instruction, those that actually help our kids to read, and that's not referencing the classroom. That is basically saying, hey, we're already struggling with illiteracy, and then we're going to lay off those resource teachers that actually help our kids how to read. And that's the kind of stuff that's got to stop. Because if it's not good for the classroom, it's not good for anything, and if it's not good for the teachers as well.
All right. Mr. Dillon, you're entitled to a rebuttal.
You know, just so we're clear, Bastrop ISD has a strong record of financial responsibility, and that's something we take very seriously. The district has earned the state's highest fiscal accountability rating of superior achievement, and we also make our financials accessible and understandable to the public online. We undergo an independent audit each year and have consistently received awards for sound management of those public funds. Our total operating budget is around $131 million with an additional $34 million for debt service. And despite our growth, our current tax rate is actually 37 cents lower than it was seven years ago when I first started on the board, a testament to how seriously we take our stewardship of public dollars. The district's also made some smart financial moves, investing funds wisely and earning over $17 million in interest income for our general fund and bond funds. That income helps offset some of those rising costs and allows us to stretch every dollar a little further. And some of those assistance in the classroom are being put back in place this year because we've figured out a way to do that with some of this extra money.
Thank you. Question number seven first goes to Mr. Eason. How would you prioritize mental health support and resources for students and staff within the district?
Well, that has actually become an ongoing increasing need, especially when it comes to the sped and everything that fits categorically under that. A large percentage of our kids now are somehow identified in that category. There's a couple of things that I am concerned about for the classroom. I think inclusion needs to be revisited. I think every kid has the right to be educated. That is one of the responsibilities of a district. That's one of the challenges of it, by the way. I mean, no matter where a child is at, the district has to find a way to educate, and that's difficult. But right now, the way it works and this, kind of the idea of inclusion that they're using, I'm not for sure if it's benefiting both those that have the learning challenges as well as those that are in the classroom. I think there has to be at least explored in some ways where students that are challenged in various areas are pulled aside and given special instruction. Now, I realize the rebuttal would be on that, well, we already do that. I could absolutely tell you that is not happening around completely. One, we don't have the staffing for it anymore. It is in the policy, but it's not happening. I believe the whole idea of inclusion needs to be revisited for the sake of those that are in inclusion and for the sake of the rest of the classroom. I don't think either are getting the education that they deserve right now. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon, same question. How would you prioritize mental health support and resources for students and staff within the district?
You know, Bastrop ISD is a district of innovation, and that comes with a special meaning. It means we have local control and we're able to provide more benefits to students. Bastrop ISD does an outstanding job when it comes to serving students in special education. The teachers, aides, therapists, and support staff who work in this field are truly some of the most dedicated, compassionate, and skilled professionals you could ever hope to meet. Their patience, care, and commitment to every student's success is something that inspires me deeply. It's important for our community to understand that special education is not only a moral responsibility, it's also a legal mandate. The state of Texas sets the required services and funding levels that districts must follow. In some cases, that means providing extremely individualized support. For example, we may have two certified teaching professionals in a room with just one student because that's what that student needs to thrive, and that's what's required by law. Our job as a district and my role as a trustee is to ensure that we meet those needs with excellence and that our special education teams have the resources, training, and support to do their jobs well. Every student deserves the opportunity to succeed, and I'm proud that Bastrop ISD continues to deliver high-quality, student-centered support for all learners, including those with special needs.
Thank you. Mr. Eason, rebuttal?
Anyone that actually knows me knows I'm a very positive person. No one would probably ever define me as being a negative person. But somehow, when it comes to this arena, I feel like honesty and transparency supersedes motivational speaking. We have, depending on the numbers that I did here earlier, over 12,000 students we're responsible for. I'm not criticizing the teachers, I'm not actually criticizing anyone that's in the trenches and trying to help educate our kids. But we have to stop creating a different narrative that's actually happening in our schools. That's what concerns me. I'm either thinking you're not hearing what is happening, or you're willingly not hearing what's happening. I don't know what it is. But I feel like we have to confront it face on, I mean, head on. These are the challenges that we're facing. Not taking away from any teacher, I love our teachers, they know I'm an advocate of them.
All right. Question number eight first goes to Mr. Dillon. How do you plan to support and retain quality teachers and staff in BISD, especially in a competitive job market? What steps would you take to ensure that teachers are compensated and have the resources they need to succeed in the classroom?
You know, teacher turnover is a challenge, not just here in Bastrop, but across the state and the nation. Currently, Bastrop ISD's teacher turnover rate is in line with the state average, but that doesn't mean we're satisfied with average. We want to retain great teachers, and that means understanding both why they stay and why they leave. The reasons teachers stay are clear: they feel supported, respected, and empowered. In BISD, we worked hard to create that kind of environment through instructional coaching, professional development, a strong sense of campus community, and leadership that listens. When teachers feel like they're growing in their careers and making a difference in students' lives, they're more likely to stay. At the same time, we know teachers leave for many reasons. Sometimes it's personal, sometimes it's professional. But factors like rising workloads, lack of planning time, and pay that doesn't always match the demand of the job can push great educators to look elsewhere. That's why I've consistently supported efforts to provide competitive salaries, reduce burnout, and give our teachers the tools and time they need to focus on teaching. As a trustee, my commitment is to keep listening, keep supporting, and keep creating the kind of environment where teachers want to build a career. Because we support our educators, we support student success.
Mr. Eason, same question. How do you plan to support and retain quality teachers and staff in Bastrop ISD, especially in a competitive job market? What states, state, what steps would you take to ensure that teachers are compensated and have the resources they need to succeed in the classroom?
Well, one thing is, I have actually three daughters that teach in BISD. So I, it's like, whatever decision I'm going to make is going to support teachers. Anything that would be against that would be fundamentally against my own family. But I feel like that maybe, as I told one of my daughters, look, if you enjoy your job, you will actually be okay with less pay. But it doesn't matter how much you make if you don't enjoy your job. I mean, money does not make people happy. So to me, we may not be able to get more money, maybe it just does not exist. Let's just say, hey, there's no raises here. But what we can do is start relieving some of the unnecessary burdens that get passed down to our teachers. Because I can tell you, when there is any type of educational issue in this district, ultimately, the burden falls upon the teacher, not on Central, on the teacher. They have been given, I mean, they're police officers, they're psychiatrists, they're, you know, I mean, they carry 15 different hats. So if we can't give them raises, at least let's remove some of the burdens that they actually have to carry. And I can tell you, that is possible because the burdens just keep being poured on and piled on. So I feel like the first step to make is not promise raises, although I think one's going to come down the pike here pretty quick, but that's, it's an insignificant amount, honestly. But what we can do is create a happier work environment and help raise the morale of teachers so they do want to stay in Bastrop ISD.
Thank you. Rebuttal, Mr. Dillon?
You know, in my work as an attorney, I've always valued communication, professionalism, and trust. And I bring that same mindset to my role as a trustee, showing respect for staff expertise, advocating for fair and competitive compensation, and making thoughtful, responsible decisions that honor their hard work. I also think support means celebrating our staff, acknowledging the long hours, the passion, the creativity they bring to their roles. Whether it's a teacher, a bus driver, a custodian, or a campus leader, they all play a role in shaping a student's experience. And as a trustee, I want every staff member to know, we see you, we appreciate you, and we're here to make sure you have what you need to thrive.
Thank you. That completes our eight questions. We're going to take a short break right now, and Ms. Vicki has some announcements, I believe.
So if you haven't turned in your questions, we're going to pass those to the center aisle, and Jamie will go down the aisle and pick those up. And then I just want to remind you about some key dates coming up. Early voting is April 22nd through the 29th, and then obviously, Election Day is Saturday, May 3rd. And we want to tell you to be sure and check out bastropvotes.com under our information tab, our voter information tab, to get more details about times and locations. I'm going to tell you, to save time at the polls, print a sample ballot in advance so that you know exactly what is on your ballot. And then I also want to remind you that state law prohibits any kind of electronic device going into the polls with you, so you can take a sample paper ballot. Lastly, I'd like to again thank you, to our sponsors for the support of this initiative. Again, Community Impact, Rengel Breimer, and then the Bastrop Ministerial Alliance. I appreciate your continued support to make this happen. It does take a lot of time, it takes money to rent a fabulous facility like this, and so we do appreciate your support to help offset the cost of this candidate forum. And then also, obviously, we are a business organization. We support the business community, but we also have family and individual memberships available. So if you're interested in supporting our mission, you can join as an individual member, and you can either come see us at 927 Main Street, you can join online, or come see me after the forum, I'll be happy to get you signed up as a member. And then a couple of other dates I'd like to mention because your chamber is at work and we're working hard. We have a State of the County Breakfast coming up, April 23rd. We already have 55 people signed up for that event. It is going to be at the Community Center, the new Bastrop County Center out there at 15 American Legion Drive. Again, it's on April 23rd from 8:00 to 10:30 in the morning. And then... It is going to be at the Community Center, the new Bastrop County Center out there at 15 American Legion Drive. Again, it's on April 23rd from 8:00 to 10:30 in the morning. And then on May 7th, we have our 27th Annual First Responders Lunch where we literally honor every first responder from across the county for fire, police, and EMS. So you can go to our website and sign up for that event. And then we have a Countywide Mixer coming up on May 8th. We are going to be doing that at the Bodega, and that's in partnership with our friends at the Elgin Chamber and the Smithville Chamber. And again, that is event from 5:30 to 7:00. And then if you need any help as far as HR and building a team, we have Glenn Shepherd. He's a national speaker, a real guru in this arena, and he's going to be doing on May 13th a workshop on how to supervise people and lead a team. Again, that is available, more information is available on our website. And then lastly, we are one of 15 cities in the state of Texas in 2025 that was selected for a Governor's Small Business Summit. And so in 2019, we had 106 people at this convention center. We want to, not that we're not already on the map because we are, but we want the Governor's Office to know what Bastrop is doing, and our goal with the EDC is 200 attendees. So it's $20. It's very inexpensive for a lot of great training on that day. And again, that's Thursday, June 26th. And then these guys are taking their full minute and a half and their minute rebuttal, all except question number five. I think we have a clear consensus on how they feel about that. So we may go overtime just a little bit. So if you don't mind, we want to be able to ask a couple of questions at least from the floor. And so in order to get all the questions planned in as well as ask a couple of questions from the floor, we may go overtime just a little bit. All right. You boys ready? Take a deep breath? Another drink of water? Anyways, we'll turn back over to Judge Dugan.
All right, question number nine first goes to Mr. Eason. What roles, if any, should Bastrop ISD assume for dealing with such societal issues such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, and/or drug abuse?
All right, that's a very big question, okay? So I think you got to choose a lane, okay? BISD is not a drug recovery program. We have those. BISD is called to do one thing, to educate. Economic disadvantages, I feel like we use it too much as an excuse. It's almost saying that poor people don't learn or cannot learn like people that have means. But I don't think it's the responsibility of the school district to take on every other social problem within our community. There are other organizations that deal with those situations directly, and I think the school district just should partner with them. And I believe in partnership. That's one of the things that I feel like is one of my strong suits. I'm a networking person, and I believe Bastrop community has a lot of nonprofits that do address those particular issues. And at least being informed on where you can direct people, where people, you can suggest people to go, I think that's important. So I don't really consider it BISD's issue, but I do consider it to be a community issue and where BISD may be able to help integrate them within the community. And that's what, honestly, that's what I think the board needs to do, is to be open for other organizations. Thank you. You're relieving me, honestly.
Dillon, same question. What roles, if any, should Bastrop ISD assume for dealing with such societal issues such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, and/or drug abuse?
You know, the Bastrop ISD partners with a lot of organizations to provide services to our students, our teachers, our community in general. But I got to tell you, one of the most heartbreaking things is seeing that child come to school who hasn't eaten. And you know how hard it is to learn when you're hungry? That's why Bastrop ISD gives them free meals at breakfast, at lunch, and then even prepares things for them to be able to take home because they may not get anything when they get home. So it's important for Bastrop ISD to support the whole person, the whole child, to make it their life a little bit easier so when they do come to school, they can learn.
Rebuttal, Mr. Eason?
I'm absolutely for feeding kids, okay? That's not, that's not great visionary talk that's been in place. That's what we do. You're pretty much mandated to do it. Almost any district should be doing that. Again, it's not that I'm not concerned about people. That's the world I've lived in for the last 37 years, is to consider the total person and what's best for them. But again, it's not the school district's role to cure or to fix societal issues. Yes, feed children when they come to school, absolutely, because it is difficult to learn with an empty stomach. But again, that's, I don't think that's really what the question is answering here. I think when a school district tries to go beyond what they're called to do, they don't do a very good job at it anyway. And no, I don't really think that there's a lot of networking among the schools.
Question number 10 first goes to Mr. Dillon. The number one priority of a school district is academic achievement. What is your understanding of the achievement gaps, if any, facing the district, and how should those be addressed?
Well, I think I talked about this earlier. You know, the achievement gap is a real and serious issue, and it's something we work every day to close because every child, every day deserves the opportunity to succeed, no matter their background. You know, when we, when I talked earlier about some of the things we've implemented to close that gap with the high-quality instruction materials, adopting a new curriculum, replacing our curriculum instruction director, our new teacher project, those are the things that matter and that have been put in place over the last two years so that hopefully this achievement gap begins to get closed when we talk about the measuring kids against their socioeconomic status, I'll say. You know, and running for the school board is about showing up for our community and especially for our kids. Over the past 10 years, I've consistently voted in school elections because I believe every decision matters when it comes to education. My opponents only voted in one school election during that time, including missing key votes on important school bond measures and even last year's presidential election. I think it's essential that our school board members have a track record of being engaged and invested in our schools. Now, this isn't about pointing fingers, it's about accountability. When you ask the community to trust you with big decisions, your track record of engagement matters. But at the end of the day, this race is about our students, and that's why my focus is on smart investments in education, fair assessments, and strong fiscal responsibility. I'm here to bring steady leadership, real-world experience, and a deep commitment to helping every child succeed.
Mr. Eason, same question. The number one priority of a school district is academic achievement. What is your understanding of the achievement gaps, if any, facing the district, and how should those be addressed?
Okay. I do first want to clarify, Mr. Dillon, that I do vote, and, and I believe in voting, absolutely. I'm not really for sure that metric came from, but I do believe I have a constitutional responsibility to be voting, so I can't really speak to anything other than that. Yes, we're supposed to educate. You know what? You get one shot with a kid. You realize that. We've been teaching kids how to read for 3,000 years. Why is it so difficult today to teach our kids how to read? Did you know nine out of 10 parents actually think their kids are reading and are at grade level? In some areas in BISD, only one out of 10 are even close to grade level. I'm not, I'm not questioning policy here. The policies are in place, that's why we can repeat them. It's practice I'm actually questioning here. I'm not saying we need to change hardly anything. Why don't we just implement what we already have? That's the big thing. It's not really about, to me, about, I think literacy, I should say, is the number one priority. If a child cannot read, he fundamentally is going to have a very difficult time in life. And right now, the reading scores are absolutely alarming. We have no redos. We can't call them up after they graduate and say, oh, come on back, we finally figured this out. This board has had years to figure it out, and it has not gone up at all.
Mr. Dillon, rebuttal?
Well, you can go to the Los Pines Republican Women website, and you can see the voting history of all the candidates on there to see for yourself when you voted. As a candidate for school board, I believe strongly that qualifications, experience, participation, and community involvement are not just important, they're essentials. Our schools face complex challenges that require thoughtful leadership, informed decision-making, and a deep understanding of both education and our local community. My background has given me the tools to navigate the responsibilities of this role, and experience matters when you're making decisions about curriculum, budgeting, and policy that directly impact our children and their future. But just as important is participation, being present, listening, showing up for the hard conversations, and being accountable to the people you serve. Community involvement is the heart of this work. A school board member should reflect the values and needs of the community. That only happens when you've been out there volunteering, supporting students and teachers, engaging with parents, and building trust over time. This isn't just about holding a title. It's about doing the work, knowing the people, and making decisions that put students first. That's the kind of leadership I offer and the kind of leadership our schools deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. The next two questions are from the floor, and it first goes to Mr. Eason. How has BISD performed in the last 10 years on the STAR test versus the state average?
I'm only really familiar with probably the last four years, okay? I didn't go back farther than that. But I want, I do want to clarify one thing. I will admit, I, I, I will fall on the mercy of it's never too late to start doing things right. I will admit, I had four, four children graduate from BISD, and I, it was kind of out of sight, out of mind with me. I just kind of, I trusted the school district. I did. I've been involved in other parts of the community. You can't be involved in every aspect of the community. So I've been highly involved in other aspects of the community. It really wasn't until I felt like I'd be, kind of became awakened or aware of the situation that this district is facing that really gained my interest. So I, I will, I will definitely admit that I have not poured my whole heart and soul in it, but I have taught at high school level. I did start a student development program in a, in a school, and I did start a trade class for high school students. So it's not like I haven't done anything. Now, what was, the question again, though, was...
How has BISD performed in the last 10 years on the STAR test?
Okay, in one area, just to take one area, a 30% decrease just last year in reading, in third-grade reading. It was 13%. The state average is around the 20%. Now it's down to 9%. So I'm not for sure if I even saw one metric that was over the state average. And by the way, Texas is way low in the national average, so they're not even a good metric to even measure yourself by.
Mr. Dillon, the same question. How has BISD performed in the last 10 years on the STAR test versus the state average?
You know, I talked about this earlier and how the STAR test is, you know, it's, it's been distorted in how sometimes we measure things. I'm talking about testing second-grade math with a fourth-grade reading and which of the results you get like that. And some of that is the flaw in the system, and some of it is work that needs to be done in the classroom. But I can tell you this, that, you know, Bastrop ISD, when compared to other similar, similarly situated districts, we're right there. We're doing everything that needs to be done, and our students are performing. When you look at the way Texas schools perform on national assessments, Texas is at, in the top 10% of national assessments despite the flawed STAR test. So the kids in Texas are getting the education they deserve, and, and they know how to read. I was just in the classroom a couple of weeks ago for the Career Day, a bunch of third graders. I'm standing down here at Mina Elementary for Career Day, telling them what I do as a lawyer, right? These kids are incredible. I sat my notes down for a minute. They picked up my notes and started reading, started asking me questions about what I had written on my notes. And I was just amazed at, you know, standing there in that classroom that I had been sitting in 45 years ago, I told them, because it's the same exact classroom in the same building. And, and, and the kids were just incredible. Our kids are doing great things in Bastrop ISD.
Mr. Eason, rebuttal?
If we can't measure our students by the STAR test, okay, that's, that's a given. It's a, I mean, you can't change that. That's a mandate. But if we remove and begin to make excuses for that STAR exam, then we really are, are going to struggle to find a real measurement here. I'm not saying it's the only way, but it is the measurement that we use to know where kids are at. All one has to do is go to the BISD website, and we will see that we are struggling in so many areas. And I don't know, if we go ahead and say the STAR is not it, then, then we're going to have to create a whole nother standard that we can measure our kids by. I'm not saying that no child can read, absolutely not. We've got great students that graduate here, go on and do great things. But I think the commitment should be that every student learns how to read, not just 10%, not just 12%, not every percent. And as far as the measurement, I mean, maybe we're using the Colorado River Academy. Okay, thank you.
All right. Question number 12 first goes to Mr. Dillon. Legislation has recently been proposed to hold superintendents criminally responsible for not reporting sexual incidents within 48 hours. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm under a similar obligation. If I know about child abuse, I held a license, and I have a license that tells me that if, if I know about child abuse occurring, I have to report it, or I could lose my license. I don't see a problem with that now. The superintendent would have to have personal knowledge, I would think, under the law, and not just be reported through the school system because there's reporting mechanisms in the school system for that. So that kind of additional burden on a superintendent is not that great, but anyone that knows about child abuse should report it and should protect that child.
Mr. Eason, same question. Legislation has recently been proposed to hold superintendents criminally responsible for not reporting sexual incidents within 48 hours. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that's a good law, but I think one would just have to ask, why was that law even put in place? It is obvious because superintendents were not reporting it. I mean, there's no other reason to even have a law like that. Unfortunately, I wish I could say that everything was being reported. I'm not talking about sexual incidents, I'm talking about just all acts of bullying, all acts of violence unfortunately is not being reported. But I absolutely am in favor of any district employee that finds out that a kid is being sexually assaulted to be held responsible for getting that reported.
Mr. Dillon, rebuttal?
I think it's pretty clear that, you know, we all want to protect children.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's the goal of everyone in this room, I hope.
Thank you. That brings us to closing statements. Mr. Eason, you get to go first on closing statements, and closing statements are two minutes.
All right. Well, I want to say thank you guys again, and I could just reiterate the things that I think are important here, but I would say this. I think my life, my vocation in a nonprofit has basically equipped me for a position like this because nonprofits, and especially growing nonprofits, face a lot of the similar challenges they chase. They face budget challenges, staffing challenges, facility challenges. I mean, we're, we're just faced with it, and those are the same challenges that the school district face as well. I think one thing, though, is that in the nonprofit, you have to come up with solutions. You can't, we just can't sit and talk about the problems. I think that's what qualifies me here. I've, you know, I've led the nonprofit for a lot of years. It requires, I, in my opinion, nonprofits, all successful nonprofits require a higher level of leadership because you have to inspire people and motivate people to do things that sometimes they would not want to do. To inspire volunteer staffing, to inspire people to stay true to the cause, to inspire people to stay on task is a real challenge, but it's also a real gifting. In the corporate world, you don't do what you're supposed to do, you get fired. I think there needs to be accountability, absolutely. What you don't inspect, they say people don't respect. I think everything has to be inspected. I think everybody needs to be held accountable for whatever role they're playing in our district, starting with the board, working their way down. And, and I feel like that is something that is important to me, is the accountability aspect, but also to inspire and hopefully raise the morale of the district.
Thank you. Closing statement, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Judge Dugan, and thank you again to the chamber and to everyone who took their time to be here tonight. Your engagement matters, and it's one of the many reasons I'm proud to call Bastrop home. Serving on the school board for the past seven years has been a privilege, and what drives me is simple. I want to give back to the district that gave me so much. I'm a proud graduate of Bastrop. I'm a proud graduate of Bastrop High School. This is where I grew up. It's where my wife and I are raising our two sons, and where I built my law practice. I've seen firsthand how our school's shape lies, not just mine, but now my kids, their friends, and generations to come. I'll never forget watching my oldest son walk across that graduation stage, knowing that the teachers, coaches, and staff who guided him along the way helped shape who he is today. That moment reminded me exactly why this work matters. I'm running for reelection, not for recognition, but because I believe in the mission of every child, every day. I believe in this district, I believe in our students, and I believe in the power of strong, steady leadership. I want to continue working as part of a team that listens, learns, and leads with one goal in mind, student success. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve, and thank you for your support.
All right. I want to say thank you to both the candidates, and from firsthand experience, it takes a lot of guts if you're going to put your name out there on a ballot. And so I want to say thank you to them. Thank you all for the answers to the questions. I will turn it over to Ms. Becky at this time.
So I have to say that the, like, just spontaneous meet and greet that happened last week for our candidate forum, and then again tonight, I'm like, I didn't know that we were just going to have food and dinner and everything out here, so, and snacks. So anyways, thank you for helping make this candidate forum fun. So again, a big thank you to our three sponsors. Again, we really appreciate you helping us with this candidate forum and this initiative. And then if you want to know what the chamber stands for, what our policies are, I'm going to encourage you to go to either our chamber website or Bastrop Votes website. You can see what our legislative priorities are word for word, and so I would encourage you to go there and look at it so that you understand what your chamber here in Bastrop stands for. And then I have to give a big shout out to my staff. First, to Corneon Bailey, who is back there behind the screen doing the V-deck thing. He's always behind the scenes and making us look great. And then Jamie Haney, our VP, who is our staff liaison for the governmental affairs, and really, in the last two years, has upped our advocacy efforts. We've gone from like, no investment advocacy to like a 6% of our entire budget, which you have to have 8% for five-star accreditation, but man, going from nothing to 6% is pretty awesome. So big round of applause for Jackie, or Jamie. And then Jackie here on the front row, keeping us on time tonight and making sure that the candidates stay in their lane and don't take up too much time. I'm going to tell you, your chamber staff in Bastrop rocks. Round of applause. In attendance tonight, we have Dr. Kristy Lee. She's here observing, and, but she does lead as the chair of our governmental affairs committee, so thank you, Dr. Kristy Lee, as well as our governmental affairs team. I think Carlos is back there. Carlos was once our governmental affairs chair, so he's back there watching and observing. And then a big thank you to our chairwoman, Megan Webb. She's back there a little, and to our board directors, there are several of them here, Chris, Dominica, I'm not sure who else is here, but several of our board, oh, Lori's back there. So thank you to our board directors for supporting this initiative. And then I have to thank Judge Dugan for making this, it's a serious issue, but he's made it really fun and informative, so thank you to Judge Dugan. I told him this was just kind of a one-time gig, but I'm hoping he stays around, so y'all encourage him. And then again, to these candidates, as somebody whose husband served on a school board for four years, three and a half of that as the president of the school board, thank you, because I know what time it takes to run for school board as well as serve on a school board. So thank you to both of you for being here. So since the inception of this initiative into December of 2015, I believe that this has become a very impactful initiative of the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce in a way for us to engage with our elected officials. This initiative has been replicated across the state, which makes us very proud of what we're doing here in Bastrop County. So I encourage you, before you go to the polls, please do your research. Evaluate the candidates, make an informed decision, because local elections impact us the most. They can be lost as much as a couple votes. So please visit bastropvotes.com for more information. And then thank you for those who are watching online, and then you in attendance tonight. As we transition to our candidate forum for mayor, if you're not staying, if you could quickly move out to the hallway and please be quiet, we need to transition pretty quickly. But if you're going to stay, you're welcome to stay in the room. But again, thank you for your attendance tonight.